Welcome to our Durango City Council regular meeting for March 12, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. May we start with a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Woodruff?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Here.
Counselor Yasi? Mayor Yusef?
Here.
And Counselor Bosmans?
May we have an introduction of the translator, please?
Mayor, the translators are not in, and I just realized it's because they have the wrong link. We had to repost a new link for this meeting, so I will get them the link and get them in.
Got you. Okay, maybe when they are here, will you let us know?
Sure thing.
Okay, we will go ahead then with opening remarks by mayor and council. I just wanted to remind everyone that if you'd like to speak tonight during our city council meetings, you must sign up on the electronic portal in the foyer, please. There are instructions to assist in the process. We'd love to hear from you, but it is required that you sign up in advance before the public comment begins. And I was just going to start with a couple of opening comments, opening comments for all of you. I want to briefly discuss why I ran for city council and how important this community truly is to me. One of the things I love most about the city of Durango is the people that make this such a vibrant and welcoming place, a place where everyone can thrive, live, work, participate, and be involved. I've lived in Durango since 1997. I've had the pleasure of raising three children here. And after being actively involved in various nonprofits, organizations, and schools, I decided to run for city council in 2017 because I care about our community, our people, and the future of our town. And I am very proud to represent a government and a community that makes it a very high priority to allow everyone the right to assemble, demonstrate, participate, have a voice, and be heard. The city of Durango has a long history of accommodating diverse opinions and freedom of expression and the right to assemble. We will always continue to preserve and protect these freedoms, which are critically important to all of us and everyone in this room. As mayor, I pride myself on upholding these rights and promoting fairness and equality for all before this council. So I just want to thank all of you for being here and allowing you, allowing me to share a few of my own opening remarks. And a much more lighter and celebratory note, we have a wonderful Durango High School hockey team that we will have the honor of recognizing this evening. When they arrive, there is a chance that we may need to make room for them in the chambers because we have limited space capabilities. So we will keep you posted when that happens. We may need to take a recess and make space for them. We're expecting a pretty large hockey team presence, so I just wanted to let everyone know. Do any other counselors have opening comments? All right. Then I will pass it to the city manager for updates.
Mayor, can I suggest that we, we wait on the translators just for a minute here? I mean, you're getting into the business part of the meeting, and I want to make sure that if translating is a policy, that we give them a chance to log on.
You bet. Okay, we're going to give it a few minutes then. Can you let us know? Do you know any status?
They have the link. We're just waiting for them to get on.
Great.
All right, we have someone in now if.
Wonderful. We'd love to hear from them. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear my audio?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Great. Sorry for the issues there. Diego Pons here with my colleague, Luis Torres, from the Community Language Cooperative, the CLC. As always, we'll use simultaneous interpretation for the meeting. Once I've been saying this in both languages, the interpretation gets started. And then at that moment, you'll see that globe icon will start appearing on the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. That globe icon is going to say interpretation. We'll ask you to please select that globe icon and to please select a preferred language. And if you're joining the meeting today on your cellphone or your tablet, look for the more button or the three dots button to select your preferred language. And if you're not fully bilingual, as always, we'll encourage you to select your preferred language. If you are bilingual, feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. Thank you so much for that. Buenos dias, amigos. Yo soy Diego Pons. Estoy aquí con mi colega, Luis Torres, de parte de la Cooperativa Comunitaria de la Justicia al Lenguaje, el CLC. Vamos a utilizar como siempre hoy la interpretación simultánea y en zoom para crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Cuando yo termine de decir esto, se activa interpretación y ahí en ese momento usted va a poder ver el icono de globo la tierra que era interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Asegúrese, por favor, de elegir ese icono de globo la tierra y, por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Y si usted está asistiendo ahora a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, busque, por favor, la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o tal vez el botón de tres puntos para que pueda elegir su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Y si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a aconsejar que elija su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. With that, I believe we can pass it to you now.
Good, thank you. Mayor and council, it's an honor to ask Kelly Schmidt, our Parks and Recreation Director, to come on up as we have a very special recognition for Kim Ebner, the Aquatics Operations Supervisor, and her team of lifeguard first responders, Karina Romero, McKenna Armstrong, Ben Ward, Jeremy Heron, and Zach Sevilla.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Take two. It is my esteemed privilege to share with you today about an event that occurred two weeks ago at the Durango Recreation Center. As a result of decisive response and the application of exceptional training, a life was saved on Wednesday, February 28, 2024, by Recreation Center staff. It was mid-morning during scheduled pickleball, and one of our regular players, an 85-year-old male, was sitting out between games when a fellow player noticed he wasn't acting himself. The observant player left the gym, informed the front desk, and continued the pool area to request assistance from the lifeguards. Staff member Ben Ward was working the adjacent climbing wall and overheard. Ben grabbed the AED and went into the gym. Off-duty lifeguard Zach Sevilla, who was playing pickleball at the time, noticed and assisted fellow first responders to render care and the AED. In less than two minutes, additional Recreation Center first responders, Kim Ebner, McKenna Armstrong, and Karina Romero, arrived and started assisting with care. Kim's assessment showed the gentleman was not breathing and had no pulse. A fellow CPR-certified pickleball player began giving chest compressions. Kim took over chest compressions and in between cycles, applied the AED pads as trained. The AED analyzed the patron's vital signs, and shock was advised. After the shock was complete, Kim continued chest compressions while Karen set up the bag valve mask, excuse me, and started ventilations. When the AED analyzed the player a second time, it did not advise shock. Kim felt a pulse and witnessed the player's chest rise. At this time, the EMTs arrived and took over care. I'd like to introduce you to EMS chief Scott Scholes and Aquatics Operations Supervisor, Kim Ebner. Scott would also like to say a few words about the event.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and, and city council. So my name is Scott Scholes. My, my day job is that I'm the EMS chief of the Durango Fire Protection District, but I'm also the president of HeartSafe La Plata, which I'm going to talk about that connection here just a little bit and show how it comes to fruition. But, you know, I would say that although I'm proud of a lot of things with our EMS system, this whole HeartSafe La Plata program is one of the things I'm most proud of. And really, the reason is because it's, it's one of those programs that takes an entire community for it to be successful. Survival rates in sudden cardiac arrest are quite frankly dismal. Even with high-quality CPR, survival decreases about 10% with every minute without defibrillation. So HeartSafe began in 2004 to, to increase sudden cardiac arrest survival. And currently, we've got 370 public access AEDs in our program. We also certify and recertify about 1,000 people annually to use AEDs and in CPR. These AEDs get deployed by citizens, by police officers, and these medically trained teams like Kim led at the REC Center. So I'd first like to thank the city of Durango for being a longtime supporter of, of HeartSafe La Plata. This program, you know, is, has AEDs in, in many, many public spaces, all of our schools, all law enforcement agencies. And of course, there's also this amazing commitment to safety of all of the people who use the REC Center. And that's what we're discussing here today is how this can, this, this program is truly lifesaving. So one of my roles is to query the data captured from these AEDs. It's, it's just part of my world where I get to completely geek out on, on the, the squiggly lines and the compression rates and all of the things that happen that get captured by an AED. But one thing that's really cool about this is that it was also all captured on video. And Kim knows because she, she showed me this and saw me get giddy about being able to connect those two. And I think that's, that's really important to, 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 it helps us kind of review where, where we could have been. So with this use on, on February 28th, what I saw was a fairly common scenario where people used to die. A situation that had a very, very low survivability rate without a program like this and without responders like this. So instead, we had a classic example of what we refer to as the chain of survival. So a person has a cardiac event, right, that goes into ventricular fibrillation. There's rapid recognition of that, that, that it's an emergency. CPR is started by, by citizens. An AED arrives quickly and is placed. It recognizes that it's a shockable rhythm. It delivers the shock. They quickly return to CPR. And then the next time the defibrillator asks them to stop to analyze, that person has a functioning heart rhythm and a pulse, right? That's followed by EMS coming and doing more advanced care and transport, and then followed even further than by the hospital care. That's all part of the chain of survival. So they do really cool things there like therapeutic hypothermic, hypothermia to preserve brain function. And then, of course, the cardiac cath lab. Few days later, this gentleman went home to his family neurologically intact. And that's what this program is all about. So as you can see, the early intervention, the early CPR, and the lifesaving defibrillation provided by Kim and her staff is absolutely necessary and lifesaving. We can't get there fast enough with EMS. We're quick out the door, but we can't get there. Sometimes when seconds count, the minutes that we can, that we can save don't, don't matter. So this is really, really vital. So I just want to say congratulations to Kim and her team. You've led this team for quite a while. You did a great job. I'm familiar with Kim and her EMS work as well. So congratulations. There's a certificate for you. And I also have something that's highly coveted, which is this defibrillation. It's, it's a defibrillation save pin, which there's one way to get these. And there you go. And I've got one for the rest of your staff as well. I could do that. So, thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you. Thank you to Kim and, and all of you and team. Still. Okay. We will move on to committee, board, and liaison reports. I'm going to go ahead and start. We had a very productive strategic planning retreat with council and staff last week. And I want to thank staff for their efforts at refining our strategic plan and creating a roadmap for this council and staff and the city of Durango. Significant progress has been made since the, our, the inception of our strategic planning process in 2021, and it has become a very good overarching guiding document for the city of Durango. Staff still has significant work to do, including outreach to our constituents and partners to get input and further refine the document prior to approval. But I wanted to appreciate everyone's attendance, councils, and staffs, and thank staff and council again for everything. I also participated as a panelist for our Citizen Complaint Review Committee for the Durango Police Department. This panel is composed of community members that ensures that officers' conduct aligns with community standards and expectations. This is the second time I've had the opportunity to participate in this process, and it is a very important function for the city as it serves a vital component to the city's efforts of maintaining accountable, transparent, and community-oriented policing. It ensures fairness and transparency by making certain the complaints against officers are investigated thoroughly and fairly and examined impartially. There was a lot of good questions asked by the panelists this year. It was very excellent process, and I just wanted to thank staff for including me as a panelist. And with that, I will transfer it to the other counselors.
Sure. Okay, I had the Alliance Board meeting and then the Alliance, like, general membership meeting that I went to. The Alliance won with Durango Rocks Nonprofit of the Year. They were honored, and so that was super exciting. And their staff is just phenomenal and amazing and what the work that they do in Durango. And so, well-deserved for them. We talked a little, oh, the 2023 Annual Report is out for the Alliance. So if anyone wants a copy, I'm sure I can get you on our Mike French has extra. We talked a little bit about housing. RHA Strategy Annual Report, or Strategic Annual Report is coming out soon. The Steering Committee held their second meeting and was in great attendance. That's what's going to help the RHA determine long-term funding. And so they're looking at all the different potential ideas, and they're going to come forward to the RHA and give their recommendations. The Catalyst Fund Round Three is to start in March. I think the application's just opened up. So that's been a super successful, great program to kind of meet those gaps in funding that some housing partners are having a hard time with. And then we talked about our workforce. The Curriculum Development Team for Project Run has started, and I think that the website is supposed to be launched by April. And for full, you could get on there and register, register for certifications. And I think that they're anticipating that six-week program will launch in June. For the meeting that we had today, this morning, Brandon Mancini with Mercy or Common Spirit was there, and he gave an update. Super interesting, some of the stats he gave, and they've increased their physicians a ton in the last year or so. So that's great. And I think he's working on meeting with someone on staff to maybe give council an update too on some things he was talking about. But workforce shortage is a huge hurdle, especially nurses for them. Laura with Region Nine gave a presentation. They're working on broadband, housing with regional partners, the opioid response district and transit connectivity. They have 1.8 million in loans in La Plata County. And then, as a reminder, we have a new enterprise zone that opened up in Midtown. And so if you are a business in Midtown, you could possibly qualify for some, lots of tax credits. So if you have questions on that, contact Region Nine. Nicole Killian with Bayfield gave a great update on development in Bayfield. She's great, of course. And all the housing and initiatives they have going on there, which was awesome. Sarah Tober gave an RHA update, which I kind of went over a little bit here. And yeah, exciting stuff. There you go.
Thanks so much for all that information.
I actually had nothing this week, so it was, it was an off week. But I echo the same things that Mayor Yusef said, you know, we had a strategic goal, strategic plan meeting that was really just intentional about where we want to see our, our city grow over the next, you know, two to five years. And so it was really good to have those conversations with staff and figure out where we all collectively want to be. So that was a, a great, it was my first one, so it was great to be a part of it. So, thank you.
It was great, yeah. All right, we will move on to item number seven, which is public comment on agenda items for items eight, nine, and 11. However, I do want to say that if Durango, if the Durango High School hockey team joins us, we will break to recognize them. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Why don't you go ahead and just get a motion for the record that everybody's in agreement with, with interrupting the public comment to take the Durango presentation when they arrive?
Can I say so moved?
You can.
So moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Council discussion? Again, I just think, yeah, it's unfortunate timing, but we just want to make it clear that we'd like to recognize them as they had a very big hockey win. May we have a roll call, please, Ben?
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
All right, moving on to public comment on agenda items. This is for number seven. This public comment section is for items we are considering in our business meeting tonight, items that fall under eight, nine, and 11. Comments are limited to those items at this time. Comments on non-agenda city matters will be taken later in the evening. Only individuals who have signed up in advance on the electronic portal will be called to speak. Comments are limited to three minutes. Unused time is not transferable. Only a majority of council can suspend or, or alter time limits. Time limits were established to ensure fairness to all present. Please state your name, the item you are commenting on, and whether you are a resident of the city when you come to the podium. And I will have Ben also check for virtual comments when we are done with our live commenters. All right, Ben, I'll go ahead and pass it to you to call in our participants.
Thank you, Mayor. Jody Underwood? Jody Underwood? And then, just so you can hear us, the next person after Jody will be Laura Moore.
And I just wanted to warn everyone too, thank you for all for joining us, that in order to be fair and to try to keep this equal for everyone who's going to be speaking with us tonight, I'm going to raise just a, a little thing here that lets everyone know that you'll have 10 seconds left. And at three minutes, I'm going to ask you to please cut it off. Thank you so much.
I would also like to name, like somebody did last week. This is actually my first time speaking in public like this, so bear with me. Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm too short, sorry. Okay. Good evening. My name is Jody Underwood, and I am a resident of La Plata County, working in Durango. I come once again to urge Durango City Council to pass a ceasefire resolution and to voice concern over the proposed resolution posed several meetings ago to prohibit international political and religious issues. This is deeply concerning and problematic on many levels. It truly attests to how little city council has listened to its voters and community members. As we have been gathering signatures for our petition this week and discussing this issue with your constituents, we found not one person that was in favor of it or thought it was a good idea. It is clear that you are trying to stifle our constitutional rights because this issue makes you un- It is clear that you are trying to stifle our constitutional rights because this issue makes you uncomfortable. Members of Durango Palestine Solidarity Coalition have laid out a very clear case, week after week, about why this is absolutely everyone's business. Perhaps you should educate yourself on what's happening in Gaza because of us. Al Jazeera is a great source for information, or follow any of the journalists on the ground being picked off one by one who are documenting the genocide of their people. Maybe then you will be less apathetic. I also wanted to address the newest article in the paper, which said that you are trying to push us off on our members of Congress. Do you think for one second that we haven't written, called and petitioned our reps every single day for the past five months? This is ridiculous. They aren't listening to us just like you aren't listening to us. Might we remind you that you work for us? You are here to serve us, and you are completely failing in your jobs. But the main thing I want to say is this requires nothing of you, nothing. We aren't asking you for money or resources. In fact, if you pass our proposed resolution, we will be out of your hair completely. But we are very persistent, as you can see. This extends to voting as well, and we will organize just as hard at election time. Make your lives easier and call for a ceasefire, not just because why would you not want to stand against genocide and ethnic cleansing? But you get the bonus of going back to business as usual. Free Palestine.
Mayor, can I request a brief recess?
Yes. I'm calling for recess. Do we need a motion for that?
You do.
May I have a motion for a recess, please?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel discussion? Roll call, please, Ben?
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes, thank you. Because that comment was talking about a ceasefire resolution. Our comments that we're taking now in item number seven is for items that are on our agenda. Items that fall under eight, nine, 11.1, or 11.2. If you would like to comment on an item that is not under one of those items, we ask that you comment in item number 13. So if you need to feel free to change and sign up for item number 13, you have time to do so. And you can do that right now or whenever you'd like. Okay. Or, but it must be before the public comment section of public item number 13. So with that, we'll go on while we have other participants, please, Ben.
The next public comment would be from Laura Moore, and then after that, it's going to be Rick Cobb.
Resolution, oops, thank you. And the opposition of, to opposition of the resolution prohibiting the consideration of legislation concerning matters of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or individual conviction. I hope when I speak to you all that you can see the connections I'm making. First, I want you to help me understand where there is controversy about weaponizing food, killing women and children, forcing women to undergo C-sections without anesthesia, and holding 2 million people in a siege, withholding medicine and fuel, sanitation, and clean water. There should not be any controversy in those matters. I'm also wondering how you determine that the financial impact of this resolution is, quote, "unknown at this time," unquote. I am sure there are going to be legal costs associated with this, if this resolution is passed, on the stifling of citizens' ability to speak freely on issues that they are passionate about. Instead of passing this resolution to restrict things that are said, go ahead and pass a resolution for the ceasefire and the release of all hostages that's been presented to council. But before you decide to do this, or vote on this resolution on limiting the issues that can be brought, I want you to wonder what you would have done during the Holocaust, because you're doing it now. I want you to wonder about what you would have done during the Civil Rights Movement, because you are doing that now. If you've ever wondered what you would have done during the Underground Railroad, you're doing it now. If you've ever wondered what you would have done during the Japanese internment camps, you're doing it now. And if you have ever wondered what you would have done during the Sand Creek massacre, you are doing it now. So do the right thing. Show Durango citizens that you do not, that you do have a moral compass. Do not limit free speech, and pass a symbolic resolution. Thank you. Go ahead, Ben. Thank you.
And so next is Rick Cobb, and after him will be Rachel Crawford.
Hi, Rick Cobb, resident of Durango. I'm here to support the proposed resolution to limit city legislation and public comments to city business. As I thought about this resolution, Stephen Covey's model of the circle of influence came to mind. And that model is within the entire universe of possible concerns that we have. We can draw a large circle of concern, and these are things that can range from the very personal to the global level. That's an infinite amount of things that we can be concerned with. Within that circle of concern, we can then draw a circle of influence, which is smaller. And those are things that we can influence. And within that circle, we also have a circle of control, things that we can directly control. So organizations have circles of influence, just like individuals. And to be most effective, both in our personal lives and organizationally, we need to focus our finite resources of time and money and staff on issues that fall within our circle of control and influence. You know, as a city, we're making determinations about what those are. And time spent, energy spent on things in our circle of concern just mean that much less time for things over which we can control and influence. So to me, the resolution to limit city legislation and public comments, and that's in this section, I suppose they can make, people can make public comments in the next section, is it's not to silence people, it's to focus people. It's to focus the counselors and the staff to focus on things over which we have control and influence. Because otherwise, we're not effective. All right, so I love the saying, "We can do anything we want." We can't do everything we want. So we have to make decisions about how to most effectively spend our time, our resources, our money, and personnel. And I say, let's, let's let city and staff focus on Durango's issues. Thanks.
Thank you.
And next, we have Rachel Crawford, and after Rachel will be Brian Crawford.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Rachel Crawford. I'm a resident of Durango. I'm here to speak against the proposed resolution about, on today's agenda, under item 11.2. I wish to make it abundantly clear that I am here today with no other concerns to voice. I want only to ensure that any concern that any resident of Durango may have in the future will not be silenced out of subjective judgment. If a topic comes to council through multiple residents' comments, meeting after meeting, then it probably means that those residents are asking for your listening ears and your decisive action. I would expect that an organized group, an example of which is, again, present today, has the wisdom and has taken the care to discern whom to reach out to about their concerns at all levels of leadership, both within and outside of government. The ideas of international political controversy, ideological and religious beliefs, and individual conviction are each fairly vague. I'm interested to see their official definition for this context, because I get very concerned that this is simply a way for the council to justify a level of cherry picking, what it discusses. I am unconvinced that the caveat in the final phrase, which reads, "Accept in matters affecting the governance of Durango, is much more than a guarantee for you, the counselors, to be able to feign your deftness to the voices of your constituency, and to therefore play with a power that was never bestowed upon you, but which you are now attempting to lay claim to." Not to get overly theatrical here, but I believe this is how fascist states get started. I refuse to live my life in fear, and I think that at some point in the past, each of you has also chosen that approach. That is precisely how you found yourself in an elected position, after all. To enact this policy would be a clear indication that your approach has changed and that you are no longer the servant leaders that we originally voted in as our city counselors. I urge you strongly to vote down this resolution. It has ill-formed boundaries that demonstrate your wish to use your council seats against the will of your constituency. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
And next is Brock, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Actually, I believe we have the Durango High School hockey team here. Is that correct? Yeah, do we need to, I think we might need to do a quick recess so that we can make some room for them to come into the city council chambers. So we'll recess for a few minutes while we get them and allow them in. Thank you. I'll do a motion to recess. Thank you. Do I have a motion from council?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please, Ben?
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting Summit 4-2 in Denver on March 5th. First of all, huge round of applause. This is Durango High School's first state championship in any sport since 2020. The accomplishment came just two years after Durango moved from a club team, after Durango Hockey moved from a club team to a sanctioned varsity team under CHASA. What is amazing about this team is that it is pretty much a 50-50 split from players from Telluride and players from Durango. This is only the second season that these players have been able to play together. And while they don't get to practice often together, their teamwork grew as the season progressed. This win marks a banner year for Durango Hockey, which celebrated major accomplishments across most of its age designations in 2023, 2024 year. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Coach Kevin and Captain Brady Hallbrook.
I'm not Brady. I'm not.
This is Henry Howe.
What do we say?
I'll go first.
Yeah, you go first.
So, thank you for having us, and thank you for recognizing the Durango Hockey Team. We did join them a couple of years ago, and we did have a couple practices the whole season. Some people said, oh, you practice once a week. We did not. We practiced a couple of times for the whole year, and we grew and peaked every single time we played. That was our peak. If we had another tournament this weekend, that would be our peak. We just got to learn each other every single week, familiar faces that happened to be at our semifinals and finals. And thank you for recognizing this group of kids. We knew that when we battled each other for a couple of years, when we did finally get to play together, we knew that it'd be a heck of a story. And it was. We didn't care who we were playing. We just kept getting better every single week. Henry Howe?
Yeah, I just want to say that I had a great time with all the boys, and I was born in Telluride, so I knew them going into the season. We've all had our histories, but the way we progressed and came together throughout all the challenges that we faced this season were awesome, and I think we really grew into a place that's at least really happy for me with all my teammates and the bonds that I made and the lifelong connections that I'll have. So I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for recognizing us and for all the support we got throughout the season from the whole community of Durango and Telluride.
While we were two towns playing for one team, there were schools that had five schools that played together, six schools that played together.
That's a skill issue if they couldn't beat us.
And so while Telluride and Durango did match up and combine a great team, we were playing big, giant, four-a schools that accumulated kids from five schools, six schools. It was amazing. So again, small town, Telluride, small town, Durango. Thank you again.
I want to get the last word. I just want to say that throughout the whole season, we kind of embraced the villain role, and I think that fits us really well to this day. No matter who we're playing, we're going to beat them.
No, I'm kidding.
Thank you, guys. And I just want to say, thank you very much for the support from all of you, guys. The escort back into town from the championship was incredible, and it's something that the boys and all of us will remember forever. So thank you, guys.
And before we break and get a photo, I want to let some proud councillors say a few words as well.
I don't know if we'll have enough time for Councillor Beal to give, espouse all of her love. Holy smoke, I didn't realize that you guys only had a couple of years, much less a couple of practices, to make this all happen. I mean, that's truly a testament to the caliber of team that you all are, but also the ability to just overcome whatever obstacle was in front of you. So those are lifelong lessons that you guys have in front of you, that you learned at a very young age, that really gives not only good opportunities for you, but man, what a great opportunity to make us all proud. So great job, and keep up the good work.
I'll keep it short and sweet. These boys know how I feel about them. I've taught many of these kids how to skate and cheered them on since they were little, little, little. So I'm super proud of you, boys, and the way you guys played together the last couple of years. And I also want to say thank you to my councillors and the community for letting me take off last Tuesday to watch them win the state championship. I know there was a lot going on, and we had to delay some things, and I wouldn't have missed it for the world, and I'd miss every city council meeting to watch them play in a state championship game, for sure. So congratulations, boys. I'm so proud of you. You work so hard.
Yeah, we're doing a picture.
Yep.
Thank you all. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we will end our recess and, sorry, and we'll start again. Public comment, item number seven. I want to thank all of you for obliging us for that just wonderful opportunity to recognize them. It doesn't happen every day, and it is a big, really big happening for our community. So thank you so much for bearing with us for that. And with that, we'll move on, and we'll continue with public speaking, please. Or, sorry, public comment and public speaking.
Thank you, Mayor. The next individual is Brian Crawford, and that'll be followed by Katia Speaker.
Oops. Hello?
And if I can just remind everyone, these are comments related to our public, our business agenda items tonight, items number eight, nine, and 11.
Yes. My name is Brian Crawford. I am a Durango citizen, and I'm speaking against Agenda Item 11-2. This resolution seems hastily put together in response to recent events without fully considering its implications for Durango citizens. As elected members of city council, you're entrusted to deliberate on concerns brought forth by citizens upholding the democratic process that these meetings represent. However, this resolution undermines this process by restricting who can propose legislation, potentially leading to personal interests outweighing public concerns and fostering distrust. The proposed resolution risks infringing upon freedom of speech, undermines democratic principles by limiting legislative scope, and may face legal challenges. I urge city council to reject this resolution to uphold democratic values, promote transparency, and protect constitutional rights. And that's my, one of my main concerns is the transparency behind what we decide, and that's something that needs to be kind of worked into this resolution. But I don't, I don't really go along with it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And next is Katia Speaker, followed by Christina Thorburn.
Good evening. My name is Katia Speaker. I'm a resident of Durango. And I'd like to comment on Agenda 11.2. Your recent press release stated, quote, "Current city ordinance prohibits councillors from considering legislation regarding political party or regional or ideological partnership," end quote. And it goes on to say that your proposed resolution, quote, "Would align public comment on non-agenda items with the previously adopted ordinances and policies," end quote. We understand this policy is listed in your charter under Article 7. We can point out to, we can point to several resolutions passed by this council that not only can be seen as taking a side on a partisan issue, but also support federal and global efforts that I'm sure not every Durango resident was in support of at the time. Resolution R. 2021-0042 made Durango a member of the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, which advocates for state and federal policies in support of clean air, clean water, and reduction of fossil fuel consumption. Resolution R. 2021-71 states that Durango City Council recognizes the global climate emergency and the need for more urgent action to achieve carbon neutrality and keep global heating below 1.5 degrees Celsius goal of the Paris Agreement. And, quote, "Wishes to join cities across the U.S. in committing to the ICLEI, 150 cities race to zero, a U.S. local effort in support of the global campaign of the United Nations' climate champions." It also states that, quote, "The city of Durango recognizes the importance of leading by example, which is what we are asking you to do here." I and many others here tonight support both of those resolutions that I just mentioned, but you can't pretend that climate change is not a partisan issue. In 2020, the U.S. pulled out of the Paris Climate Agreement thanks to partisan efforts by President Trump enrolling back the Obama administration's policies on climate change. These resolutions also show the council is willing to join global efforts in addressing an urgent problem. I urge you all to take a step back and think about why you are trying to pass this resolution now. Is it really about simply aligning our city policies, or is this just a way for you to silence those speaking out about genocide? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Christina Thorburn, followed by Sweetie Marbury.
Hello, my name is Christina Thorburn, and I'm a resident of Durango. I am here to oppose the passing of the Agenda Item 11.2, or 11.12. You, as a city council, are moving to adopt a resolution that keeps comments on track with the governance of the city of Durango. You claim you have no authority over international or national matters. You may even go so far as to say Colorado state matters. That may be true, that you don't have such authority, but with your position comes power and influence. I imagine that when you ran for office, you didn't ever think that you would be in such a position as you are now to have to make, take a public stance on such an enormous global and human rights issue. That probably feels scary to you. You know who else is scared in ways that we can't even fathom? Palestinians. And yet, here we are. You asked us to elect you to be our leaders, and that the foundation of local government is the principle that you represent the constituents. If part of that job is not to represent our voices to larger government bodies, such as Colorado and the rest of the states, then to who else are you representing us? If you adopt 11.12, you're doing the exact opposite of your duties. You're silencing your constituents and cutting off the closest and most direct connection we have to government. I ask you to think of why you ran for city council in the first place. Was it to do good, to be of service to your community? If you pass this resolution to limit our speech, then you're quite simply failing your community now. Instead, I call on the humanity in you that I imagine made you want to be a city council member. Step up as the leaders you asked to be. Be brave and pass our demand for a ceasefire. Join our voices in calling for peace and an end to our government-funded genocide. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, there are four public comments left for 11.2, and so Sweetie Marbury is next, followed by Zach Lawrence.
Thank you, Ben.
My name is Sweetie Marbury. I'm a resident of the city of Durango for 50 years. I've been coming to city council since 1987, speaking on issues of parks from recreation, housing, and development issues involving the city. I do support 11.2. The city council has focused generally on issues of city and state issues, and also sometimes looked at to CML for guidance. I'd like to remind everyone in the chambers that Lisa Poole represents Senator John Hickenlooper in Durango, and John Whitney represents Senator Michael Bennett in Durango. Both of these men deal with national and international issues every day of their life. All of us have a voice, and we need to contact our senators. This is what I believe. Don't miss that opportunity. Many of the speakers have been passionate and speaking from their heart. I love it, just like you do. However, there will always be tragic and heartbreaking issues facing America. This is just where we live in this day and time. But by contacting your senators and your congresspeople every day relentlessly, just like I do, on the phone to Washington, D.C. almost daily, I believe that's where the power is. I'd like to read a few lines from the Durango Herald Sunday editorial. Tell the Biden administration exactly how you feel about the war in Gaza through representatives who work directly with him. Be effective in larger ways. A symbolic resolution from Durango council is going nowhere. Counselors' ability for real action in this agonizing international matter won't amount to anything. I've been where you are. I understand your dilemma. Yes, you were elected to represent everyone in this chamber and all the people in Durango. You have a very difficult job, and I appreciate that, but I do understand the business of the city governance. And I want to make a difference. You want to make a difference. They want to make a difference. So I support 11.2, but I also put support free speech every day, calling our senators, taking our stand to Washington, D.C., whatever the stand is. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Zach Lawrence, and that'll be followed by Joshua Craig.
Good evening. Oh, shoot. Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Zach Lawrence. I live in Durango, Colorado. I've moved out here in 2001 and took a couple stints as a hermit in other areas. But regardless, I would like to speak out against the proposed resolution in favor of, you know, I feel like it's, when grassroots movements start, they start at home. And as has been mentioned, you know, we call our representatives, I call every single day, I call Hickenlooper, I call Boebert, I even call Pelosi. Every single day, I call the White House comment line. So we are taking our voices to the higher levels, but we have to start at home, too. And that's where my passion and moral obligation, like I am obligated to, I'm responsible to stand up for my beliefs, and this is the only venue in town I have. And, you know, whether it's, you know, this resolution seems benign, you know, to focus on just the local issues, but it's also kind of a proclamation that when our voices get too loud or too passionate or too inconvenient, then it could just be, we could be muffled. And that, to me, is, you know, somewhat of an attack. There's probably other ways to go around this issue. And also, there is a lot of vague, you know, there's a lot of gray areas, and there's a lot of precedent, too, you know, that the city has created resolutions that are in favor of global issues. In 1982, there was one, in 2007, there was one, and as has been mentioned tonight with the Paris Accords. So I feel, you know, I'm sorry, I don't really have anything prepared, but I think upholding democratic values, the fundamental crux of any strong democracy or public forum is the freedom of speech. And I understand- I understand, you know, what people have said. Obviously, local matters are very important. That's, that's a no-brainer. But just being heard is important too. And so I'm here to speak against that resolution and in favor of continuing a dialogue in public forum. That includes all our voice, voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Joshua Craig, followed by Jamie Bechtel.
Hello, my name is Joshua Craig and I'm a resident of Durango, Colorado. I am speaking today on behalf of the Coalition in regards to item 11.2 and why I disagree. I stand here today because I've been a resident of Durango for seven years now, and I would consider myself lucky if I were fortunate enough to reside here for the next seven years and beyond. Since moving here, I started a small landscaping company and I learn a living, quite literally pouring my blood, sweat and tears into this soil, into this land we call Durango. I cherish this opportunity and I feel privileged to be able to work with the residents of this community. And conversely, I am happy to spend my dollar locally. I want to continue spending my hard-earned money at local businesses because I can see that Durango cares about its residents and cares about improving their quality of life. Though a portion of my taxes does get responsibly returned to the community I call home, the unfortunate and dare I say inconvenient truth is a portion of the money I spend and work very hard to earn is taken by the federal government and spent internationally. To put simply, money I spend and earn right here in this town is being used to help fund a genocide in Gaza. This is not a political issue. This is not a religious issue. This is a human issue, a human atrocity. And whether we like it or not, our quaint community is currently involved. I will finish by asking the council, if you do not believe it is our duty to speak up on planet-wide affairs, then what planet do you operate on? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, the last public comment for 11.2 is Jamie Bechtel.
Hello. I met this young man in the hallway and asked him if he'd just stand with me. Uh, my name is Jamie Bechtel and I am not a resident of Durango. I was previously, but I've taught here for many years or for multiple years. And I'm here to speak against, um, number 11. Over the years, I have taught in many of Durango's schools and have taught many of Durango's children and young people at River Miss Preschool, Juniper School, Escalante Middle School, and Fort Lewis College. And when I view the images of the suffering that is being experienced by the children of Gaza, I can't help but conflate the agony on their faces with the faces of my own students. Because as a teacher, the thought of losing even one of my students is really impossible to bear. With your proposed legislation, you posit that the tragedy in Gaza is not relevant to city discourse. And yet there are 14 public schools in the Durango 9R District, serving 5,794 children. Some of them perhaps are your own children that might go to public school. And I just want you to imagine, and it's not a pretty thing to imagine, but I would like you to imagine just for a moment, all of Durango's children being gone. Just all of them gone. And then if you can double that number in your imagination, and I know it's really hard to do, that doesn't even hit the number of the children that have lost their lives in this conflict in less than a semester of school time. And this is a community of over 400 public school educators, plus the professors at Fort Lewis College and Pablo Community College, people who have chosen to dedicate their lives to children and young people. And we teach children about political issues. We teach our students about people around the world. We try to instill in them a sense of individual conviction to care about things in the world beyond where they live. So knowing that, I ask, how can you propose a resolution that would prohibit the consideration of, as you say, matters of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or matters of individual conviction? Why would you propose legislation that would deny our freedom as educators to speak out on the moral injury of this situation? Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, was that our last one? Okay, sorry. Um, may we please then have a reading of the consent agenda? Oh, oh. Do we have anyone who wanted to comment virtually? I'm sorry.
No one had signed up for a public com, comment on agenda items only, uh, virtually.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know. All right, we can have a reading of the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for item eight, the consent agenda, there are no items under 8.1, approval of meeting minutes. There are no items under 8.2, final reading of ordinances. Under item 8.3, under adoption of resolutions by consent, item 8.3.1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the pass-through of property tax backfill funding to the Durango Fire Protection District. There are no items under 8, 8.4, approval of other administrative items. No items under 8.5, land use and development action items, and no items under 8.6, request for public hearing.
Thank you, Ben. Is there any counselor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Uh, seeing none, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number 10, may we have a reading of item 10.1, please?
Item 10.1 is consideration of a resolution, a resolution approving the US Eagle Credit Union Preliminary Plan Development, parcel 566902300310, submitted by Community Development.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Armentano giving us a presentation today. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Dan Armentano with the Community Development Department. Uh, this is a preliminary PD request for, as stated, the US Eagle Credit Union. And I'll start with a brief overview. Uh, this is a relatively straightforward proposal for development in a subdivision of an existing about two-acre vacant lot out in the South Fork Character District. And I'll show you where that is here on the next slide. The zoning for the property is planned development. Uh, however, our typical standards for commercial zoning requirements and design do apply. Um, as stated, it's for a financial institution, the US Eagle Credit Union. And the new lot that'll be split off will be reviewed and developed to a later date in time. Here's a context map showing the property here outlined in red. Uh, so this is the new Morehart Murphy Subaru dealership out here. So it's immediately north of that across Wilson Gulch. Uh, we'll point out here, this is platted right-of-way for Crater Ranch Road. That's currently under construction right now. And that will provide access to this lot, uh, which will be split in two, as well as to the Mesa Verde Estates, uh, development, which is located to the north and has already been approved. So here's a proposed layout of the development. Uh, this is the credit union building right here. Uh, here's Crater Ranch Road and Wilson Gulch Drive to the south. So the access is off of Crater Ranch Road here to the north of the, uh, new credit union. There are two accesses off of this access easement to, uh, provide access to this new bank, as well as to the new lot over here. Um, the bank itself, the structure is about 3,400 square feet. It does have a three-lane drive-through immediately to the north. There are 21 proposed parking spaces, uh, with the current application. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a couple slides. Uh, and then, uh, as I mentioned, just those two access points here, this will be shared with the lot to the east. Uh, here's, this quickly is just a representation of the subdivision. So here's the lot that's to be developed and here's the new lot. Uh, they're both about one acre. They both do use that 50-foot access easement to the north and have that shared access easement in between. Both lots conform with the standards for our commercial general zoning district. So here's a couple elevations of the new credit union. The main things to note here are the use of the colors on the exterior. Um, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, but generally our design guidelines do require colors to be used more as accents, uh, as opposed to primary colors. Um, and there are requirements for corporate colors. In this case, these colors that are proposed are corporate colors. They're, um, used in the, the credit union's logo. Uh, so staff has some recommendations to modify those colors to be earth tones, uh, to align with our commercial design guidelines. Otherwise, the building is oriented towards, uh, both right-of-way, uh, along Crater Ranch Drive, uh, sorry, Crater Ranch Road, as well as Wilson Gulch Drive. Um, just a couple more design considerations. Just talked about the color modifications. Um, there's also a recommendation for them to reduce their parking. By code, this development only needs 12 parking spaces. So we're asking that they reduce the number of parking spaces from 21 to maybe 18 or so and expand the landscaping within the parking lot. Uh, we're also asking for sidewalks along that access easement to the north, uh, as well as along the Wilson Gulch frontis, excuse me, frontage. Uh, and then this image here on the right is the new floodplain maps from FEMA. There's a potential for a floodplain conflict with this, uh, blue color here. That's the 100-year floodplain. Uh, the applicants have indicated that the building is likely sighted outside of that area. If it is within that area, they will need to go through an additional floodplain development permit process, which is relatively straightforward and should be an issue. Uh, but that is a condition of approval that if the building is found to be within that area, uh, they'll need to address that before getting a building permit. Uh, just quickly on applicable standards. Uh, first, the development must be consisted with the South Fork Character District Master Plan. That's an adopted plan, uh, governing the development standards for the area. Uh, as well as the proposed public improvements do need to meet city standards. Staff find that these criteria broadly have been met, uh, with the following conditions. Uh, first, there will be a final PD submittal and that will need to address all remaining city comments. Uh, that exterior color scheme does need to be updated to align with city standards. Uh, they will need to get a sign permit, uh, prior to installing any of the permit signage that they're showing on their elevations. And then that floodplain development issue, uh, if it comes up, will need to be addressed. The Community Development Commission reviewed this back on February 26th. Uh, their comments focused on exterior design and those colors that I mentioned, uh, especially for that drive-through canopy. Uh, they also talked about the ability to address the floodplain concern. The applicants are aware of the city's comments and in the hearing did indicate a willingness to address those comments and all of the conditions. And the commission recommended approval unanimously on a seven-to-zero vote. Uh, there have been no public comment received by staff up to this point, uh, nor in the Community Development Commission meeting. Oops. Uh, just real quickly on process, so this is obviously your all's, uh, review this evening. If this is approved, the applicant will submit for a final PD review. That's an administrative process. Staff will ensure that any remaining comments are addressed. Uh, we'll also review the final plat for the subdivision, uh, before it is executed. Uh, if those are both completed, the applicant can submit for a building permit review and construction. So staff and the Community Development Commission are both recommending approval, uh, by resolution of this project. And I have a motion on screen. I will note that we do have the applicant, uh, in person in the audience, uh, as well as their representatives online, if you have any questions.
Mayor and council, before this item goes on to council consideration discussion, I want to have Scott Shine come up and just give a recognition to Dan Armentano as this is his last, uh, presentation to the city council till unfortunately he is going to leave us for the county, but we understand that it's a, a great jump for you, uh, in your career, but, uh, you'll definitely be missed. But I want to hand it over to Scott to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Madrigal. We interrupt the regular scheduled program, uh, to embarrass my colleague and friend. Um, Dan started with the city in, uh, 2016 and, uh, started as a permit tech. So he's been with us almost seven and a half years. Uh, he's now a senior planner with the organization. It's been great to watch his progression as a professional, um, and a contributor to the community. And I think it really exemplifies what we're trying to do, um, with the organization is recognize and support talented individuals. Uh, Dan worked while Dan was working, he got his master's degree from Northern Arizona University. City helped him in that effort as well. So just a, a great story, bittersweet, uh, we're excited. Um, I'm excited for him, um, but, but sad to lose such a high performer and friend. So, uh, wanted to take a moment to recognize Dan for all his contributions. We got him a, a little gift and make sure, uh, council knows that we're, we're living out this desire to really, um, support the people in our organization. And even though he's leaving, we're, we're happy for him. So thanks for that.
Excellent, congratulations.
It wasn't a surprise.
Yeah. Um, all right, do I have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the proposed US Eagle Credit Union Preliminary Plan Development with the findings and conditions as described in the staff report and discussed at this public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, I'm going to take a moment to, uh, see if we have any public comment on this, either live or virtually.
And no one has signed up, um, online or in person for this item.
Thank you so much, Ben. I'll close the public comment. And with that, can I have, uh, council discussion, please?
You succinctly answered all of my questions. The only other, like lame question I have is about drainage. Uh, but I mean, looking at the, um, the, the site maps, it looks like there's more than adequate draining, um, for, for the 100-year floods. So that was literally all I had, so thanks.
Yeah, just quickly, engineering will review that in more detail at the final stage too, so, yep.
Nothing on the project, but thank you for all the work you've done for the city and all the amazing presentations we have had by you.
Yeah, you're going to be missed. We will miss having you. Thank you for being a part of our team.
Thanks, Mayor.
May we have a roll call, please, Ben?
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Counselor Yazi has joined us online, so I don't know if we need to make a record that she's here. Um, I'm not sure exactly when, if she was here on that item because we had the presentation on. So I'm not sure if there's a vote that she'd like to take or not on this item.
You should defer to her if she feels like she's heard enough of the comments and discussion to vote.
Okay, Counselor Yazi, did you hear that? You're on mute. Well, you're still on mute and we're wondering if you heard the presentation, if you'd like to take a vote. Um, we've lost your camera now. I think Ben will move on to a roll call, please.
Uh, go ahead and repeat this roll call.
Oh, we didn't. Oh, we already did, sorry. I, I'm, okay. Um, okay, we're going to move on then. Um, may we have a reading, please, of item 11.1?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, 11.1 is a resolution to approve a destination manage, management master plan submitted by the Public Information Office.
Great, and I believe we have, um, the consultant or Tom, are you going to speak with us? Wonderful, thank you.
Oh.
I'll hand it over to you.
Great. Uh, good evening, Mayor and councilors. Tom Slus, Public Information Officer for the city and staff lays on for visit Durango. Uh, council directed staff to create a
I need to be able to get off mute.
Get what?
Get off mute.
So council directed staff to, uh, create a master plan for the management of Durango as a tourist, uh, destination. And, uh, this item is a high-level document that, uh, will aid us as the city, uh, addresses the overall impacts of tourism. It's also going to help us align with our existing master plans as well as our strategic plan. So what we have tonight is Bethany DeRose, who is, uh, as a panelist, who's going to give you an overview of the, um, effort that we've undertaken in the past year. And then we will be able to answer any questions. And then there will be a resolution for you to consider to adopt this as our latest master plan. So with that, Bethany, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Tom. Uh, and, uh, good afternoon, uh, city councilors. Thank you for having me, uh, here today. Again, Bethany DeRose, uh, Executive Vice President with JLL's Tourism and Destination Advisory Practice. Really pleased to be here, uh, after spending, uh, several months, uh, over a year, uh, with the city, city staff, members of, uh, the industry stakeholders, uh, and community, working on this 10-year destination management master plan on behalf of the city. Tom, just confirming you can see the screen?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So as Tom mentioned, I was going to take you through tonight, just a quick high level overview of the planning process and the outcomes. I believe you've had the full plan for about a month-ish. And if you have questions on it, happy to answer any of those. So as you see on the screen, the destination management master planning process had four phases. The first phase was all about engaging with stakeholders, members of the industry, community and city staff. We spent a lot of time upfront, getting to know the community and understanding the city's strategic planning process and values of the city and how to incorporate those, those aspects into this process. Phase two was entirely focused on data-driven elements of the plan. There was a significant amount of market research, both primary research and subscription research that went into this effort to benchmark Durango and consider where we are today and where maybe we are aspirationally in the future. So a lot of work done in that phase two period to, to gain insight and use that data as we headed into phase three, which was all about sort of combining the feedback from stakeholders, community members and city staff and the research elements to determine where we potentially headed, what priorities were surfacing to the top and try to create strategy around those priorities. Phase four was ultimately where we tried to take that vision and strategic thinking and ultimately want to put a roadmap together, something that would, you know, live on for, for 10 years and be a guiding document for the city and for its partners as the plan is activated over time. So the purpose of the project, again, develop a roadmap for the destination, considering management and stewardship. Again, from this, the position of the city, but also being inclusive of partners and of the community. This, this language is very closely tied to wording in the original RFP. So the city did put out a very specific RFP and we were, again, my team and I lucky enough to be awarded the opportunity to work on this project collaboratively with the city and thinking about its future over the next 10 years as a destination of choice for visitors and for residents. So I mentioned that phase one, we're going to just highlight a couple of quick things that were involved in the process. I mentioned phase one was all about engagement. So there was key engagement. In the very beginning, we formed a task force, 16-member task force that met regularly. That task force was made up of both industry members, city staff, members of the sort of broader Durango community that are both directly and indirectly involved with the tourism and hospitality space. There were a lot of great discussion coming out of that task force with both individuals and as a group that have played a key role here in the recommendations and strategies included in the plan. We also had seven in-person focus groups with over 40 participants. Those focus groups were focused on everything from again, the sort of core traditional tourism considerations as well as city sustainability, air service development, economic development, and making sure we had a broad touchpoints and, and participation across those conversations. Next piece here, we did have an open forum town hall. We hosted that one evening while we were in town, same, same week that we did the in-person focus groups. We had several, several great conversations and issues surfaced during that town hall where people raised their concerns and their support for the community and wanting to understand what the destination management master plan could mean to them. So that feedback was great and critically important is considering how we provide balance over the course of the next 10 years as, you know, as a city, as a community, looking to understand the DMMP. Additionally, we conducted individual interviews, both in person and virtually, and made sure that we were rounding out those focus group conversations and that task force participation with individual members of the community and making sure we had again, more rounded out input there. Another aspect of the scope of work here was to study economic impact. And this was specifically again, part of the RFP that the city released. We partnered with Tourism Economics, which is globally well-known in this space, entirely focused on studying impact of the tourism industry. And so there's, there's a lot more behind this slide that has been included in the final deliverable and also in the appendix of the methodology here. But you can see overall impact included as it relates to the total economic impact of tourism, both in dollars spent and jobs created and taxes generated. So important factors here to, to consider as we look at the entire scope of the destination and what that means to the destination and to the community. But again, back to that word balance and the, the original purpose of the plan, this is not everything. This is just a component. So ultimately what we found in this work, again, combining the phase one and phase two findings and thinking about the potential priorities that may come out of this work, you know, some, some key findings, three key findings we wanted to highlight today. The first was to prioritize sustainability. We heard this loud and clear in our in-person interviews and our focus groups as well as community feedback that prioritizing sustainability is, is critical for the destination, for, for us as a community. It was also loud and clear that the city has invested in sustainability and wanted to see that carried through in this initiative. The second piece here, we wanted to highlight is to manage visitor impacts. So understanding that we are a destination of choice and that we have a great community that we want to protect and preserve with great natural resources. And so managing that demand and managing impact was a key component of the work. And lastly, developing destination with community needs. The community here was, was key to the process, core, core component of ensuring that there would be both support and partnership across the board. And so wanting to see the, the destination and the community find balance and find ways to, to partner together about what those needs will be in the long term. So what came out of that with those key findings were six priority areas and recommendations. Those, these six areas that you see on the screen and as you've seen in the full final plan, each contain the priority area, recommendations inside of that and tactics inside of that to give guidance and recommended guidance potentially for the city to consider as it moves forward with the destination management master plan. So just to go over a couple of those, you see the first one on the screen, sustainable development of the Durango experience. So that ties directly back to all of those key findings, wanting to prioritize sustainability and identify partnership with the destination and community. The sustainable development of the Durango experience is, is sort of a holistic way and a, a well-rounded way, we believe, to consider the industry and to consider community because this is both sustainability of our, of our natural resources and of the environment as well as the sustainability of the industry. What it means to maybe mitigate seasonality and to manage demand and manage access to natural resources. So we are ensuring the longevity of those assets. Second one, alignment and collaboration on industry infrastructure needs. So this ties back to, as it says here, infrastructure. So the sort of backbone of supporting industry as well and the importance of that over time and the importance of that for the city as, as the city obviously invests in, in infrastructure projects as it goes forward. The third tourism product development. So the tourism product that we have today in Durango is, is incredible and cherished by both the, the community that is there, your residents and obviously all of you, but also the visitor who is, who is coming and wanting to share in those experiences. And one of the things that we found does tie back to again, that sustainable development of the Durango experiences. What do we want to see in Durango? What do we want to see from a product standpoint? Are there considerations or opportunities that should be considered? And this, this recommendation area gives guidance on that. Number four, sustainable tourism marketing and destination branding. The city has already taken action on this, but this is just to put a sort of reinforcement on this area with the sustainable tourism marketing dollars that are allocated and in support of that, that ongoing effort. Number five, relationship and communication management among all partners. And this is, this is something that is, you know, the city and its, its staff and partners are already doing. But again, as we evolve as a community and as a destination over the next 10 years, continuing that two-way conversation, identifying partners as the plan evolves and, you know, as, as the city evolves to ensure that management of the destination is consistent and is clear and that is leveraged of those great partners. And lastly, number six, update and address policies to support sustainable tourism development. Again, kind of tied to the one prior, this is something that will continue to evolve. There are already policies in place. There are opportunities as, you know, as this entire plan and as time progresses that we may need to stop and address and look at our current policy and look at guidelines and look at partners to make sure we're checking in on that sustainable tourism development of that destination management. Where are there opportunities for us to find better alignment or drive an increased return in a particular area? So each of these six that you see on the screen, again, they all contain more specific recommendations and strategies in the actual document. But I am happy to stop here and take questions. I know that there's been a lot of time put into this project and just want to thank the city staff and city councilors for giving us the opportunity to collaborate with you on this work and look forward to hearing any questions or thoughts.
Excellent. Questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, who's going to be responsible? Do we have a staff and then them for implementation?
That's the million dollar question. So right now we just have one city staff liaison, which is myself for Visiterango. I know we do have staff members who are meeting with various committees with Visiterango for sustainability and for destination management. But this particular plan is pointing that out. One of the things that we did discuss in great detail was the cost of doing nothing. So I think it's really going to be incumbent to develop that plan and for the outreach to happen and have to have a better in-house approach. We do have one that's kind of ad hoc, but it's going to require some in-depth discussions because it is going to be a greater staff demand.
Yeah, because I was, I was like, that's a, this plans a lot for Visiterango to take on. And I didn't, I don't think that that's what they're designed for necessarily. And so if we're going through the effort of doing a big destination management plan with 10-year implementation goals, I feel like we need to be ready as a city and staff implement said plan. How, given the 10-year timeframe, how will the plan be adapted to the changing market trends or unforeseen circumstances? Will they be asked to come in and do edits? Will we? No.
No, this, I mean, this plan is not really intended to be a prescriptive plan for the next 10 years. That's going to require exact implementation. There's enough leeway built into it. So as we have different input and different data points that show, for example, tourism might be morphing into a different direction, we can pivot and incorporate all of that. You know, we've been doing that, I think, from the get-go regarding trying to disperse visitors throughout different areas and trying to really focus on the shoulder season. So I think as that data comes in and Visiterango is really good about that, we, we've got the, the flexibility and the, and the adaptability to make sure we're going in the right direction.
Okay, great. Does the plan encourage public involvement at different stages, like as we're going through it? The 10-year thing is just, it's like, that's a long.
Yeah, I mean, the 10-year plan really is to inform essentially the RFPs that we're going to be putting out in the next couple of years for our contract to deal with a lodger's tax. The public involvement is really going to be, I think, with these groups that, for example, Visiterango has with their board meetings. We're always open to gathering more public input in terms of where they would like to see the dollar spent as it being done in a way. I mean, perfectly happy to do more forums. I'm sure Clancy would be willing to jump in on that. You know, I love doing polls. I love doing forums. So yeah, we'll do plenty of outreach.
Yes. And then destination branding, is that going to align with city branding or something total, Visiterango branding?
At this point, our discussion on logo and branding is just for the city.
Yeah.
In terms of their branding for the area from a marketing and tourism, tourism's perspective, it's a separate issue.
Okay. Yeah, I think that definitely implementation is going to be huge for me and how we're updated and yeah, what the next steps will be after that.
Yeah. So right now our plan is we will have written reports every quarter from Visiterango. And then I know they're trying to also have a greater presence during public comments. We will have Rachel here at the annual report. So I know they're very interested to make an appearance here.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I was going to ask about what is the next step? You know, where, where do we go after we got this information? I'll also say that before I was elected on the city council, I sat in on one of these focus groups over a year ago. So it's been that long of compiling data and really looking through all of that data to, to really put this report. So if anybody is out there that really wants to look at what tourism looks like in our community and not only tourism, but like how we as a municipality manage that tourism to align with our values. I mean, take a look at the city council packet from today and it's, you know, I think it's what 30 something pages long? It's, it's an incredible resource for how we envision tourism in our community moving forward. And so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not just anecdotal. I mean, it's 30% of our economy and 26% of our workforce is attributed to tourism. So it's a, a major sector and how we move forward with that over the next 10 years, I think, is really important. And I, like Jessica, I think I'm really looking forward to see what those next steps are and then what, what does it mean over the next 10 years? And how will we pivot if, if needed? So thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for the efforts. It has been a long time in the coming. I really liked the desire to focus with a prioritization on sustainability and managing visitor impacts. I mean, we've all known that this is some of our top priorities. So it's nice to see that reiterated in this plan. I agree that we do want to keep this alive and make sure we use it to our fullest potential, which I'm sure, you know, has, I'm assuming Visiterango has seen this and/or we will share it. Yeah. And so I would love to see maybe even, you know, work with them if we don't have the staffing to see how we can best implement some of these ideas. I know that they're similar in concept to what I've heard from Visiterango in the past, but I'd like to keep moving forward in that direction. And, and I also thought it was really interesting that she talked about, you know, again, like we've been sharing and we shared in our retreat is, you know, what, what, what do we want Durango to be? And again, I think you mentioned that in your area of branding, but also this is just, this is a higher identity issue that I think that we're all talking about and wanting to hone in on over the next bit of time. So I think that this is a good step in the right direction. Other thoughts or comments?
I think Gil is logged back on.
Yeah, I'm wondering if.
We can promote her, see if, because she's been on, I think.
Counselor Yazi might want to say anything if she does. We should probably promote her as a panelist.
Can we mute and unmute her for her? Are we able to mute and unmute? That would be awesome.
So she is there. Counselor Yazi, did you want to make any comments? Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we had counselor comments, but we didn't actually have a motion on the table. Do we need a motion here? Yes, we do have a motion. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-2024-14, accepting the destination 2034, the city of Durango's destination management master plan to guide the city's tourism efforts for the next 10 years.
Second.
We already had comments, but do we have any further council discussion? Roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Tom. And, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, councilors.
All right. May we have a reading of 11.2, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11.2 is a resolution establishing a policy of the city of Durango City Council prohibiting the consideration of legislation concerning matters of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs or individual conviction, matters directly impacting the governance of the city of Durango, accepted. And that's submitted by the city attorney's office. And that's submitted by the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Ben. Mr. Morgan, would you like to introduce?
I would do my best. It's resolution number 2024-15, if I understand correctly. Resolution 2024-15. Before I start, I just want to say that, that I share the emotion and conviction that former mayor Sweetie Marbury gives when it comes to freedom of expression. You don't, you don't go to law school to try to repress rights. You go to law school to try to protect them. And having said that, I can comment that the proposed policy found in tonight's agenda, if passed, is a tool to align public comment at regular special, regular or special meetings with previously adopted policies and ordinances. Current city ordinance, section 2-200 prohibits counselors from considering legislation regarding political party or regional or ideological partisanship. Current policy prohibits counselors from making proclamations taking sides in matters of political, ideological, or religious beliefs or individual conviction. It's significant that the language in there says consider legislation, because the only place you can consider legislation is at a regular meeting like tonight or at a special meeting that the mayor and three counselors have the ability to call. Has nothing to do with the freedom of expression and many other forms that are available to the residents of Durango. It's just regarding your meetings. Regarding public comments and free speech at our meetings, the first thing I'd like to make very, very clear is that this is a decision of the elected officials of the City of Durango. These are your meetings and it is your decision how you conduct them. You already have policies in place that restrict time, place, and manner. You made a choice to adopt Robert's Rules on how we conduct these meetings. You made a choice to limit the time counselors can speak and you made a choice to limit the time that the public can speak. So you already have restrictions on free speech at your regular meetings. A lot of people understand those restrictions, but when it gets to restrictions that come to whether the type of forum that you're going to conduct people are less familiar. Supreme Court of the United States recognizes traditional public forums, designated public forums, and limited public forums. Legally and constitutionally, you are only required to have public comment on matters that you will be voting on. You have chosen to have public comment on other non-agenda items. The question before you tonight is whether you're going to become a designated public forum or maintain your status as a limited public forum. Since you hired me, we've had a history where we adhered to the rules of order and followed specific procedures to advance the business of the city. These rules and procedures were established to allow us to react appropriately to the type of incidents that happened during the hate bombing and the antisemitism a few meetings back. You will recall that during those meetings, I very loudly said, this is a limited public forum and you are constitutionally allowed to restrict this type of speech. Excuse me. In contrast, and in the news recently, Fort Collins has designated themselves a public forum. They are not a limited public forum. Their agenda very clearly says that any matter can be spoken about by any individual who signs up to speak at their meetings. There are other places in Colorado where the charter says that you are required to have a designated part of your agenda creating a designated public forum where you cannot restrict things to city business. If you read the news articles about Fort Collins, they were unable to conduct business at that meeting because of their status as a designated public forum. And I understand for researching about it, they may go to completely virtual public meetings to avoid the type of issues that they had at that meeting. I personally wouldn't advise Fort Collins to do that, but I don't work for Fort Collins. I work for you guys. Absent a charter change, I want to stress again, this is your meeting. It is your business meeting. And you have the absolute right to decide what type of forum you want to be. And the legislation that's out there today is constitutionally appropriate. It retains your designation as a limited public forum. It is a choice that you have to make between being a limited public forum where you can restrict speech in a constitutional way, like you already do for time, place, and manner. You're just restricting it to city business. This has no effect on the city as a whole. A lot of people have made comments that the city is trying to limit or silence us. That's a very, very overreaching, overbroad approach, but is very effective when you're demonstrating to try to prove a point. That is not what is happening here. You guys are making a simple decision between being a designated public forum. And I pointed out one of the problems that can happen in a designated public forum, like it happened in Fort Collins, or retaining your status as a limited public forum. The constitute case for anyone who's listening is Rosenberg versus University of Virginia, which very clearly establishes by the Supreme Court that limited public forums are constitutional. They are appropriate and they are within your authority to establish with things like this resolution.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion from counsel? You got the number?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution establishing a policy of the Durango City Council prohibiting the consideration of legislation concerning manners of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or individual conviction, matters directly impacting the governance of the City of Durango accepted. F E H P G.
This is.
Resolution number 2024-15.
I second, Gilda.
Thank you, Counselor Yazi. Counsel discussion? Who would like to start?
Okay. Okay, I mean, that didn't look like you were going, so I'll go. Okay. My thoughts on the resolution before us. I educate myself and I study issues of city budgeting, finance, affordable housing, transit, parks, and recreation. Durango's strength lies in addressing the needs and concerns of our local community. Not wading into complex international matters, matters that I will be completely honest with you, do not, I do not have the education or background to make policy on. While we can strive to be global citizens, pronouncements on delicate affairs of this nature risk overstepping our bounds and potentially complicating existing diplomatic efforts. And then the question lies, where do we draw the line? Do we propose resolutions about funding Ukraine? Laws that Alabama just passed about frozen embryos, border policy? The list could go on and on and public comment could go on and on for hours. This is not what we are, this is not what I am educated on. And we may disagree about this and you may say that I should educate myself on, on these items and that's okay. But I can tell you as a mom of two teenage boys, owner of two businesses in the City of Durango, a city counselor that makes roughly $10,000 a year to sit here and educate myself on city issues. It is not in my bandwidth to have the education or background for every national or international issue. It is not in my ability or scope. I ran for council because I love our community. I ran for council for the community I fell in love with 22 years ago. I ran because I love raising my kids here. I love owning businesses here. I love the spirit and character of our community. Someone here said that we are trying to, trying to silence you and that is in fact not the case. We have listened. We have taken notes. And we hear you. In those first meetings, no counselor wanted to champion the resolution you were wanting us to do. It's okay to disagree. It's okay for us to disagree on what you think we should advocate for as city counselors. What we should weigh on, weigh in on. It's okay for us to disagree on what you think I should be educated on even. We are able to disagree. That's what makes our community so amazing. It's why I moved here. It's why I love raising my kids here. And just because we don't agree doesn't mean we need to be disagreeable, rude, or disrespectful. It doesn't mean that we have to hate each other. When we start discussing issues that are deeply rooted in religious and cultural complexities, this is outside of why I was elected to city council. I ran on issues of affordable housing, of keeping the spirit and character alive here. The issue, these issues that we're talking about in this resolution often defy simple solutions. I believe our true strength lies in demonstrating the values we hold dear as a community. Durango has a long history of advocating for peace, understanding, and respect of all individuals, regardless of their backgrounds or beliefs. We can continue to champion these values by supporting organizations working directly in the region to provide humanitarian aid and foster dialogue, promoting intercultural understanding and education within our own community, standing in solidarity with those suffering from conflict regardless of their nationality or religion. There are important roles we all play in our community, activists, city councilors, city staff. Knowing how and where we best serve our community is crucial to getting important work accomplished and having meetings run effectively. I love engaged citizens. We have had council chambers filled numerous times. Sometimes we voted with the room, sometimes we didn't, but we listened. And we voted the way we felt was best for the city. And that is our role as counselors. That is why we were elected. Those are just a few of my thoughts as we navigate complex waters and my time is ticking down.
Thank you. Other counselors?
Policymaking is at the heart of our roles as city counselors. We decide on policy as a body and our incredible staff at the city take over the operational aspect of those policy decisions and make them a reality. Some resolutions and ordinance are slam dunks and some, and make sense to everybody. Sometimes they are divisive and impact different groups within our community. Even rarely sometimes it is asked for us to take a stance in supporting or not supporting matters of national and global importance. Taking the time to pass this last type of resolution and taking a stance on an issue while almost always noble often has effects that are not noticed by those that need to hear them the most. We are already divided on local issues like wakeless hours at Lake Nighthorse, how to best spend lodger's tax revenues, and what our Lepost annexation and subsequent development should look like. An even larger divide can be seen on a resolution taking, supporting, or not supporting a ceasefire in Gaza. Counsel taking a sta, a stance on such a complicated issue only deepens those local divides that cannot be solved by a two-page document. Frankly, we're overwhelmed by local problems that we could better apply our intellectual bandwidth towards. That being said, substantive impact comes to our, substantive impact in our community happens on a local level. Sound local policy direction happens through collaborative public input with our constituents, listening to civic leaders, our Durango residents, and subject matter experts, and considering legislation with an objective mind. I believe considering most, if not all, ordinances or resolutions are a part of why we are here and why we are elected into our roles as city counselors. By voting yes in this resolution, my feelings are that it only disconnects us from our community and takes away from the important work that we do on a daily basis. Considering legislation, even legislation that is being proposed by constituents today and at previous meetings is the backbone of why we are here. I do not believe we should be restricting legislative proposals that our community members find important. Our job is rarely ever easy. I believe that's why we wanted to be on council in the first place, to roll up our sleeves and get the work done even when it's hard. Unfortunately, the cost of distancing ourselves from our community far outweighs any type of benefit. We all ran on platforms to listen to our community and weigh out their voice and create meaningful policies, policies around what is important to us and what reflects our values. I believe that this resolution being proposed currently can be taken entirely out of context by someone and used to silence public participation on the grounds of ideological beliefs. The unintended consequences of this resolution leave me concerned that members of the public could be left out because of one person's interpretation of what this resolution brings forth. Often, local government is the first connection that people have with their government at large. If constituents feel like they are not being heard by their state or federal representatives, then this is the only mechanism they have left to give their concern a voice. Additionally, while the First Amendment may prohibit Durango City Council from making any law respecting the establishment of religion, the latter part of the First Amendment states, and I quote, "Or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances," end quote. It is that last phrase, "right of the people peacefully to assemble and petition the government for a redress of grievances." That compels me to believe that this resolution would inflict more harm than do-good and alienates this council from the people. Sometimes we are the last place constituents can go and feel like they are seen and heard by their government. These folks have the right, right to peacefully assemble and redress the grievances so long as that assembly and redress do not devolve into hate speech or disrupt the ability for this body to conduct business regarding city operations. This mechanism gives them a peaceful option to voice their concerns. That peaceful legislative option is taken away from them, it gives them few other options to peacefully assemble and petition their government. While this resolution may not directly inhibit public participation and speech, however, this takes away a lever for the public to pull and feel like their voices are heard. Ultimately, we as a council reserve the right to bring up a possible resolution under new business. We have not exerted that right with the coalition, with the coalition proposals these past three weeks. I feel that we do not need a resolution preventing what we are already doing. After the boards and commissions' dissolution, this matter gives the optics that we are again trying to limit public participation in the city process. While we have taken great strides in capturing public participation via other outlets, thank you, Clancy, thank you, Tom, like engaged Durango forums, council meeting, public participation, the utilization of focus groups, reaching out to local and regional nonprofits, contact city council via the website, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But this reinforces the belief that we are trying to limit public participation when we're actually trying to achieve the exact opposite. Thank you.
Counselor Yazi, did you want to add something?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. You know, this resolution has brought me to, to think about how I do feel about city government. And moving forward, I do think this resolution would help us be more effective in what we're trying to accomplish, which is provide services for the City of Durango. We have been working as a limited public forum since I came to council. And I think this resolution is just simply codifying it in our ordinances. One of the reasons I ran for city council was to see if we could streamline our meetings, go ahead and participate in a very functional fashion. And I do think this resolution would help us do that. This resolution does not impact the way the public wants to interact with us because they can still bring their resolution to city council. They would still have to get somebody to sponsor it. You would have to get two counselors to sign on, on it, first and a second, and then you'd have to bring it forward and get a majority vote for it to become part of our regulations. So the process is still there to move forward with resolutions. I do feel good about this resolution. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yazi. And I'll just add my notes that, first of all, I sincerely appreciated hearing from all of you. You're very passionate, public comments. And I, I just want to say that, in my opinion, this is no means and effort to stop any of your advocacy and support for this cause. And I hope that everyone in this room, regardless of the outcome, continues with that advocacy and cause. And as a city, I think that we will continue to do what we can to support that in the right forums. I want to say that I've served for seven years. I feel, have honored to have had the opportunity to pass literally hundreds of resolutions that directly impact the health and well-being of our residents, residents, resolutions that support housing, transportation, safety and security, infrastructure, streets, the list goes on. I've been myopically focused on local issues, looking at the state and national level when it involves funding and/or legislation that has a direct impact on our community. And I've done this because I believe that that was what I was elected to do. And that may sound counter to many of you in this room, but it is not counter to the many colleagues that support my position. It is not counter to our current city ordinances that prohibit counselors from considering legislation regarding political party or regional or ideological partisanship. And it is not counter to our current city policy that prohibits council from making proclamations taking sides in matters of political, ideological, or religious beliefs. The resolution that we're considering tonight aligns public comment on non-agenda items with previously adopted ordinances and policies, allowing our meeting, allowing our meetings to remain focused on matters that directly impact the governance of the city. And while I was not on council when these ordinances and policies were enacted, I support them as it has allowed me to focus on all things Durango. I want to thank our city manager for reaching out to our congressional delegation in an effort to promote opportunities for meaningful discourse on issues of international conflict, hopefully with people listening who are in a position to take action. Many of you have sat through several city council meetings now. You see the work that we address at each meeting. I hope you see the importance of maintaining a structure where we can productively complete our work while simultaneously promoting free speech and opportunities to gather, assembly, and peacefully promote and/or protest. I would also ask that counselors who do not support this resolution tonight to talk about what it is you will. to talk about what it is you will do to support the individuals in this room and further support their cause if you want to keep hearing from them in this setting. What action will you take to make a difference for them? What action can you take to make a difference for them in this setting? As difficult as it is for me to stand in front of you, this very rightfully passionate and determined group, I want to be honest and forthright with what I believe I was elected to do and what I am able to do within the confines of our own governing documents. And with that, I'll see if any other comments has, if any other counselor has additional comments to add. Okay, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
No.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. With that, we will move on to public comment on non-agenda items, item number 13. Do we have individuals who'd like to participate in that tonight?
Yeah, just a moment, Mayor, while I sort the list here. So there's 10 individuals signed up to speak during public participation for non-agenda items. And we could start with folks present in the room, if that works for you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'll go ahead and read a brief some comments before, and then I'll have you call them up. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments regarding items that do not appear on this agenda. Please note that in order to make a comment tonight, you'll need to have signed up on our electronic public participation form. A QR code is available near the front door as well as a computer tablet for this purpose. The rules are similar to those that, for items that do appear on the agenda, begin your comments by stating your full name, the topic you will comment on if you are a resident of the city of Durango, make your comments directly to council. Do not expect a response from council or staff. We're limiting comments to three minutes for each individual signed in. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of council can extend those limits. Comments must be deranged and specific to city matters. Personal attacks, profanity, hate speech, derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to city matters or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and remaining time will be forfeited. That's it. Thank you. Well, go ahead and start, Ben.
The first individual is Keaton Griffith, and that's going to be followed by Katia Speaker.
Good evening. My name is Keaton Griffith. I'm a Durango resident, and I'm here to speak to the effort to put us in contact with our federal representatives regarding our concerns with Palestine. Frankly, this effort is pretty patronizing. I mean, it feels like we haven't been listened to at all because many of us have been calling and emailing our reps every single day for over five months now about this. They do not listen. They're not gonna listen just because you pass us off to them without having our backs first. And again, that's why this feels like a way to just wave us off again, like we aren't your problem because you don't have our backs first. It's just gonna become a circle of no one listening to us. You, and by doing this, you're demonstrating that you have the power to take our concerns up the chain. So acting like you can't do anything because you can only address local matters, just it doesn't make any sense anymore. It never did anyway. The city has done this before too with climate change, as we heard earlier tonight with previous resolutions, with collaborating with other cities, higher-level representatives. Why can't you do it with this issue? Climate change and this are both global humanitarian issues. And climate change and colonial violence are both deeply intertwined. You cannot solve one without addressing the other. I can understand why you think that working within the system and putting us up to these federal representatives is the right way to solve things. I mean, we've been taught, we've all been taught this like our whole lives. But something that I've learned personally within the past few years is that no liberation in history has ever come from working within the system. People have always had to fight to force the system to do the right thing. And tonight, you just passed a resolution that makes it certain that we have that that's our only choice here. So just listen to me and know that you failed us, you failed me, you failed the world by helping to preserve a status quo that allows for genocide to be possible.
Thank you, Ben. If I could ask you guys to please hold your comments or clapping so you can keep going through.
The next individual is Katia Speaker, and that's going to be followed by Christina Thorburn.
Okay, we're gonna take a recess. I'd like to make a motion to take a recess. Do I have a second? Second. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes, thank you.
And I'm gonna ask for everyone's cooperation and participation in letting us get through this smoothly and respectfully. So let's try again, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor. The next individual is Katia Speaker, and that'll be followed by Christina Thorburn.
My name is Katia Speaker. I am a Durango resident. And I'd just like to take a moment to share with you. Sorry, I'm a little fuzzy right now because a group of us are using are using our energies here today when we haven't, when we've been fasting from sunup to sundown for Ramadan in honor of those in Palestine. So I want to take a second to just invite the folks in the lobby to come sit behind me who've been working on this for the last five months. So anyone in the lobby who wants to come in and join me and sit behind me so you're not blocking anyone's view. So I think it goes without saying that there's quite a bit of disappointment in this group of people right now. I'm sure quite a few of us probably did vote for some of you. I want to thank Counselor Woodruff for your vote. And it's true that a lot of us have been gathering every Sunday at Buckley Park to march. We have been contacting our states and federal representatives, congresspeople. We're organizing a teach-in to help educate our community about this issue. We have a book club that meets every couple of weeks. So I want to paint that picture for you because it's not just what you're seeing at the meetings here. We're doing a lot in this community, and we do see a lot of our members of this community as well as those who maybe don't organize with us, who are deciding to participate but are also very much affected by this issue. They're Jewish, they're Palestine, Palestinian, and they really, really care about this issue. I'd also like to say that it's really unfortunate there are other counselors across the country that are standing up for this, and it's really disappointing. So, Free Palestine.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Christina Thorburn, and that's going to be followed by Jody Underwood.
My comment was actually for 11.2, so I'd just like to reemphasize what Katia said so beautifully as well as Keaton earlier. There's a lot that you don't see every two weeks that everybody here is doing and that a lot of people are doing, and I would urge you to do the same. I would actually welcome you to come to the teach-in and learn something. And the last thing I'd like to say is just to thank Dave, Counselor Woodriff. It's a brave thing to do, and it requires bravery. It requires looking up and sitting in your discomfort because it's uncomfortable. And I urge you to push through that discomfort because it sucks. But on the other side is change. That's what we're pushing, change is uncomfortable. It requires bravery, and I commend you for doing that.
Sorry, thank you for your comments.
Next will be Jody Underwood, followed by Jamie Bechtel.
I really just signed up because I didn't know about, you know, I didn't know which one I was going to do, but I'm just very disappointed in all of you. That's all. Free Palestine, ceasefire now.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Jamie Bechtel, followed by Whitney Lee.
I will always cheer for a child who has triumphed over something, and so I just, I want you to know, I genuinely clapped for your son. I genuinely, genuinely clapped for those boys because they deserve it. They deserve to be, they deserve to be recognized for their accomplishment. And I just want you to know, as like, as a human being, I was late to the conversation about what's happening on the other side of the world. I was. And I was busy, I'm a teacher, I was just wrapped up in my own life, and that's completely valid. And, but then I started to pay attention, and it started to change me, and I started to see children, and I couldn't unsee it. So you mentioned that you haven't dug into this topic, and I'm just, I'm speaking to you, Mayor Buell, and anyone else that identifies with not having dipped your toe in or looked or challenged yourself to look at the photos or to understand the implications of what's happening there and how international law is being just ignored, and the lives of children, the lives of schools, as an educator, seeing how many schools and universities have been destroyed there. It, that is what hits me. The children hit me. That's, I mean, that's, that's my pain point, is children. And I don't know how old your kids are, if they're in high school or middle school, but I work in a middle school, and right now, as per state standards, kids are learning about the Holocaust, and they're reading books like Night by Ellie Wiesel and Elephants in the Garden. And they're having these difficult conversations, and they're going on the UNHCR, United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees website, and they're looking at refugees around the world, and they're doing reports on that. And just to, this is where it's happening, like the children are engaging in these difficult conversations that are going to spark them towards individual conviction to want to do something someday. They're going to see what's happening, and they're going to want, some of them, not all, some of them are going to want to do something. And so you're going to do what you're going to do. You already did it. But I just, as a human being, I want to implore you to please engage with this topic. I know you're busy. But please, 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 just look into this topic. Please come to our teach-in on the 25th at the library. Just come, be open. That's all I ask. But thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
And Mayor, there are four individuals left, and Whitney Lee is next.
Thank you, Ben.
My name is Whitney Lee. I am a resident of Durango. I'm speaking in disappointment of the resolution that you just passed, and obviously in support of a ceasefire resolution that will now never happen unless we repeal someday the resolution that you just passed. I'm disappointed that you have insinuated and directly stated that this community, community members that have spoken in favor of a ceasefire resolution do not care about issues of that directly impacts this community. The only reason that this movement in Durango has gained any traction is because of a program that meets in Buckley Park to provide resources to vulnerable populations, predominantly the homeless population. It is work that you have made harder when you shut down Purple Cliffs and gave those people no other options. You probably think that we don't care about issues of this community because you do not understand the power of collective liberation. I also want to say that I do not believe that liberation ever comes from trying to appeal to the moral sense of those who are in power, no matter at what level. It always comes through the collective gathering and power of communities. But I'm glad that we tried this route because now when we do force the hand of our elected officials, we can say that we tried everything that we could. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, next we have Naylin Sarr, and that'll be followed by Lee Dean.
Hello, my name is Nolan Sauer. I am not a resident. I am a college student at Fort Lewis College. I would only like to speak about 11.2. I would like to highlight the fact that as the city attorney said, you know, when he was explaining the resolution, this was already a limited forum. Hate speech was already restricted in this space. Now it is simply a more limited forum, using very vague language that I, as many of the other people in this room have already stated, feels like it could unintentionally restrict things that perhaps otherwise the council would like to speak on. I think that Counselor Woodriff was correct in saying that what ultimately this has done is made many of the people in this community feel more distant from their government, their local government, as well as the higher levels of government who already are failing to listen to us. And again, the resolution 11.2 is different from the ceasefire resolution. I would like to highlight that you all could have continued to refuse to pass a ceasefire resolution without passing 11.2. You were already doing this. You could have continued to do this, and I understand. Okay. I, I, I think that it can, some of what we've said feels very likely like an attack, and I do not wish to attack you. I think that it is, it makes sense that you have your own understanding of your role as elected officials, but I think that 11.2 is, okay, sorry. Yes, legally, constitutionally, it was fully in line with your powers as a local city council, but I don't believe that it was in line with the spirit, the feeling of freedom of speech in this country. I understand, I understand why you passed it again, but I just, I really don't think it was a wise choice. And I think that I personally am disappointed in this, and I know that many others are as well. And I, but yes, I would like to say that I hope that all of us here have always stood against hate speech and have always agreed that hate speech was never allowed in this limited forum. And that's not what we were pushing for. So thank you all for your time. Thank you for listening. Have a lovely day.
Thank you.
And Mayor, the next individual is Lee Dean, and that's going to be followed by Ramona Gaylord, who is online.
The people that I really want to talk to are my fellow community members. I do feel in some ways as you are members of the community, I feel connected to you as humans. I do not feel any connection to you as city council members. I have already, this, since October 7th, I am a changed person. And I don't know anybody who has seriously considered what's going on and not be a changed person. Muslim lives matter, Arab lives matter, Black lives matter, Indigenous lives matter. And that's who we are standing for. I'm really only here with a vision of unity with community. And that's what I've really gained. And I've gained friends, and I've gained people to fill all the emotions with. Anger and incredible frustration with something that I really, really believed as this moral ideal of our nation that I have lost trust in. All the things that we're doing, I don't think mean anything without this, without a foundation of what is our value and really what is being spoken to me by what our city attorney said about this is a business meeting, we run our city as a business, is that our government is a business, that we are a capitalist, colonialist nation that that is not standing for peace and understanding, but we are as a community.
Thank you.
And Mayor, the last individual is Ramona Gaylord, who is online.
Ramona should be able to speak now.
Thank you, Ramona. Ramona, can you hear us? Ramona, Ramona, are you, are you with us online? Have we promoted her?
Yes, Mayor.
Ramona, do you hear us? Okay. I'm sorry, I think, I believe that Ramona was speak about item number 17. I've spoken with her on the phone prior to this. She can, just to let Ramona know if she's listening, that you will be able to speak under public comment in 17.2 if you'd like to join us then. All right, and with that, we're going to move on to other new business.
Just take a recess.
All right, Mayor, we have, I make a motion to recess. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Woodriff?
Yep.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you now.
Okay, so what's up?
We're, we're doing a roll call vote to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Bule from March 5th City Council meeting. And you're the first one to
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
All right. Ben, may we have a reading, please, of item 17.1?
Mayor, before you do that, can I ask that the clerk note in the minutes that during the recess, we confirmed that we had gone through all the people who had signed up for public comment? And anyone who's claiming that they had, they must have misunderstood the rules and they did not sign up by the time that public comment under item number 13 had started.
Thank you for, thank you for clearing that for that, Mr. Morgan? May we have a reading of 17.1, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 17.1 is a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in real property located at 166 East 33rd Street, and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation by direct negotiators as permitted in CRS 24-6-4024A and E.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from council?
So moved.
Second.
Great, council discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes, thank you. We'll adjourn for executive session. Not adjourned.
All right, we're all back. I will reconvene the meeting. At 8:43 PM, for the record, Durango City Council met in executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in real property located at 166 East 33rd Street and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. No decisions were made. Individuals present in the executive session were Scott Shine, Councilor Dave Woodruff, Mark Morgan, Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Buell, Erin Hyder, Eva Henson, Councilor Yaasi, myself, Melissa Youssef, and Jose Madrigal. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes that discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is 17.2. Do I have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to execute all necessary documents to acquire the real property located at 166 East 33rd Street as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this item live or virtually?
And Mayor, I think you indicated Ramona Gaylord wanted to talk.
All right.
From 17.2, if she's still in attendance virtually.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Hello. You are live at our meeting and we're opening our public comment. You'll have three minutes, please.
I have it. Thank you very much for this opportunity, Honorable City Council members. This is Ramona Gaylord. And my comment is about item number 17.1 in the executive session where you guys have already discussed the workforce housing unit at 166 East 33rd Street and specifically requiring its acquisition, sale, or transfer of interest. And I just wanted you to know that our daughter Soleil Gaylord, she's 23, and she has accepted and begun a job in Durango starting last month. And she's starting out her career and plans to be in Durango for the foreseeable future. She's ready to buy this unit as her first house. And we are asking that the city of Durango not purchase this condo and leave it to the workforce deed restriction for Soleil to buy. We have signed and completed the contract for purchase today with Heather Dawson Agave, just dependent upon what your guys' decision is. And we're ready to proceed with the purchase. And if the intention of the city was to provide housing for local professionals, this is exactly what we think your intention was. And so we are asking that the city not buy this property and allow Soleil the opportunity to buy it. And thank you so much for your consideration, your kind consideration, and all you do for the town of Durango. And that's Ramona Kent and Soleil Gaylord speaking for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and we'll have council discussion.
It's a little bit of an unusual situation, but I can clarify that if there's a signed contract with another buyer, the direction you're giving us, we just can't execute on it. And that's just the way the cookie crumbles. If that deal falls through for some reason, a successful motion would allow you guys to go forward with the purchase. But like I said, if it's already under contract as she's represented and the financing comes through and everything else, you would be able to use any authorization you got tonight to go forward and follow up as a backup buyer.
I'm not sure. I don't see Ramona. I'm hoping that Ramona understands that and that she could hear you clearly in the mic.
I mean, if she's first in line, she's first in line. In our motion, even though they were city, it doesn't give us any advantage in buying the property. We're just another buyer. And if she's first in line, she's first in line and we'd be second.
Okay, understood. So if there's a purchase contract already on the property, then that would have first.
Unless there's something I'm not seeing, I'm just saying that the motion you're passing tonight would not interfere with any private sale as I understand it tonight. And it shouldn't be interpreted that way.
Okay, that's very helpful for everyone to understand. Any other council discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Councilor Yaasi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
And Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.